Okay, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Wayne Stapleton.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. As I said, my name is Wayne Stapleton. I'm originally from the Detroit fishing area. I grew up in the automotive environment. My family was involved in all aspects of that. My grandfather was actually a steel inspector at Henry Ford's roof facility, where you have to contact with Henry Ford, the wooden steel purchase. But in that area, my stepfather's mother lived on a small five-acre lake in what we used to call the edge of the world. You have all the subdivisions and then, boom, cornfields and, you know, woods. That's, you know, society tended to develop. But anyway, the little lake that she went down to, that all shaved and it was all screened and ran through, and there was six different lakes and they're all interconnected like a patchwork on this creek. And Grandma's house was the last house in Oregon, because it always had to be stacked up. At the north end was the swamp and the woods and the cornfields all around me. Well, I used to go every holiday season after Christmas, well, spend the week. Snow will be a lake, an ice machine, and all that stuff, because one can sit down with northern snow as a condition. Then I'd go on holiday to climb a tree. Anyway, so I'm out there drinking gas as a ten-year-old, you know, since like fifty-one years ago. And my first encounter, how I entered into this, was when I was in an old tiny thirty-by-thirty-foot cabin. My bedroom was kind of the old storage room and bathroom. This is my room and the front porch. And as encounters tend to happen, mine begins with taking a deep breath. It's two thirty, three o'clock in the morning, and I'm in the bathroom doing my business. And I'm feeling this highballs, like I'm getting right now, and looking and trying to finish what I'm doing. And it's like, okay. And as a ten-year-old, you don't feel things like this, you know, or anything, I don't want anybody... So I start hearing in my head, "Check the window." And as I'm standing there, there's two windows here, pitch black, like drapes. There's nobody here, you know? So I just, you know, off I go, pat to the window. And as I've been closer to my bedroom, I just hear that voice. And it's getting quicker and more adamant. Check the window, check the window. Check the window, check the window. Check the window. And I'm like, and then dogs on me. There's one in the window in my bedroom. There's a bed, a nightstand, lamp, and a window. And because this room was originally the storage room, of course, one, yes, up there. And of course, what happens in the storage room on the lake, cobwebs, spiders, and dust, you know, right? So I'm like, oh my God, I need that window, I want to check that window. And I'm here just trying to look, and it gets annoying. Check the window, check the window, check the window, check the window. So I finally decide, jump in the bed, I'm like, I'm gonna check the window. And as soon as I open that window, my first thought, it's more than a couple of hours. And the window is only twelve, sixteen inches tall, and I'm two hundred feet wide. And as an old kid, I just kind of check out. And as they opened, I turned, in the corner of my vision, I could see this. A shoulder, the other hand, and two red eyeballs. Just like the old market, well, in mine, they were two-point red, and it was so close, I could see the eyes. They weren't even that big a cat, and they weren't perfectly around my arms. She's like, uh, but they were two-point red, I could see, I could see the iris, the two-pull, two-pull eyes of it. And in an instant, a race of this, but also in that instant, I screamed, I pushed back to the window, and I'm on the floor. And all I screamed is, "Yeah!" Right? And my stepmother goes, wanting to get away, like that. She comes running in, all in her head, and I couldn't ignore that. I run in on the ground, just, "Oh!" It's really weird, right? And she's like, "No, it's..." She goes, she looks, and she's, "There's nothing there, it's all done." Now, I calmed down a bit and then talked to her, what I'm seeing. And she goes, "Oh, you're having a nightmare, just go back to bed. It's three o'clock in the morning," right? And I'm like, "Oh, yeah, I was just in the back of the movie, beautiful, and...?" You know? And she's like, "Oh, no, we're just here to start, we're good." So of course, I get bed, and do I sleep? She might feel a little scared at this window. "Oh my God, it's gonna be..." Right? I am panicked. So somewhere in there, in my exhaustion, I pass out, go to sleep. Well, wake up late for obvious reasons. And everybody's already sitting around, it's like, "You're morning, sleepy, eh?" And I didn't say nothing, I just moved, went away, grabbed my coat, put on my boots, and I come outside. And now I said, "Old townies work now, it's maybe thirty, thirty-five feet square." There's three corners, like I said, in the evening. Now, Grandma's house being, again, the end of the road, a lot extra, where it's completely empty. Nobody ever put by. So people were putting their boat trailers and whatever there. So that's like fifty to sixty feet to the fence line. And the fence line is where the swamp and the forest began. Now, being the end of December in Michigan again, we've got four high inches of smell hanging up. And the first thing I noticed, coming out of the woods, is a track. Boom, 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 turned side of the house. And all along the end of the house, going on all three limits, is footprints, and this trail. Up and down, little circles, it was like somebody was there, very curious. Checking the windows, looking around, okay? And then you see the pan, another trail goes off, but now she goes off on a different route. And I say, "She?" I don't know, I didn't see below this, and for years, I've been cement, I never saw, other than the eyes. And, but the other, I got out of there, it was a good female. And I'm prepared to support the huge brother encounters, Tom and other people. But females tend to be very, very suspicious of children, which is good in everything. Anyhow, so, I don't remember any other encounter with the family the rest of that day. But over the years, and like I said, I was seventy-three, seventy-four, I was ten. All from nineteen eighty years, I would go out there on the weekend. I was a big fisherman, mugging on the boat, and go through the trails and all, and explore, right? And all the time, it kind of realized, I need to measure that window. How, because it was like, wow, how could you get to that window? How big was this thing? Because it was like, okay, maybe somebody planted a painting, whatever. Anybody want to guess? The middle of that window to the ground?
Ten feet.
Nine, nine foot. And she was standing there, looking at me at an angle. So yeah, she was probably ten foot, right? And I never got the measure, the footprints, because of course, in the snow, you know, they tend to spread because of the heat on the body, things like that. So over the years, again, like I said, I would go out sometime, because it was about twenty miles from our house on the hers. So on Friday night, I'd have, I can't speak, right? All the way up in those days, you could do that, right? Nowadays, it's like, "Get it!" So yeah, so I'd go out, I'd go fishing. I used to go trolling night for the, what, bull? Bullfish or... Well, thank you, bulls. Yeah, it was, it was, because we were interested in the catfish, where the bulls had black things. And it was like this pool, so I'd go out there. And after that encounter, obviously, I was always watching, you know, that section of the lake. And because of course, on the edge of that, right there, on that part, it was where our sand pile was. So all of my cousins and I would, you know, dig, play with the trucks. And I thought, oh, we should do that, look at our own, who knows? But I never felt her or saw her broadly away. But it was on those fishing trips at night, when I'd be in the boat, in the rowboat, by myself, you know, out there on the lake at eleven, twelve o'clock at night. And I would, almost every single trip, now, I came in a dozen of times from nineteen seventy-three through about seventy-seven, seventy-eight. Where I knew, who'd decked the eyes, and I would see her, she would see me, and she'd just be there. And I would always make a mental note of where she was, was it coming around, go higher, go higher, or full tilt? And over the years, I thought, maybe laying down, looking at me, sitting up on her knees, and then standing up. Like I said, I would make a mental note, I would see these. And then in the daylight, I would go out and try to check where I would see them. And say, okay, is there a stump there? Is there a large branch there? Is this a possum sitting in the branch? Now, in Michigan, they have what we call jackpots. And jackpots are scrawny little things that go up twenty feet, and they have even scrawny branches that are about six inches and drop off and nothing. You know, get full-brow, you know, branches with legos on until you're about ten feet under the branch, okay? So like I said, I would always check to see if there was an animal or could have been sitting, nothing there. So I was always seen, freaked out and panicked by red eyes at night. And fast forward to nineteen eighty-nine, my grandmother, her infinitism, and her ways of "I'll be everything by myself without being asked if everybody's health," decided to be up on the ladder cleaning out the feathers on her cabin at eighty-eight years old. Good idea? Yeah. So she takes a couple, because of course, she does all these, you know, her shoes. Well, and unfortunately, this didn't tend to happen with people like that. She has a breaststroke and, um, from her damage, and she's going on. So I'd go in and basically saying, you know, micro about this. And in one of her moments of clarity, she says, "Can you remember that time?" And I'm like, "You're kidding." And I was like, "What are you talking about, boy?" And I'm like, "That's a bird in my brain." She's like, "I was so glad you..." And I'm like, "What? You meant, no, you took answers? No, 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 no." The next day, when I'm looking for her, I'm like, "Yeah, I saw footprints." You know, and I'm like, "No! You wouldn't think that my grandmother's quilt out of her steamer chest." Because her grandmother had come over, I wore one of the steamers, in like eighteen ninety-something. And she's like, "You forgot my grandmother's handmade quilt, hundred and five years old, and you forgot that one out in the woods, because it was a naked man you had there with living on it when she was cold." I'm like, "What? And I don't remember this." She's like, "How did I remember this? She told me that because you wouldn't, you'd forgotten something all amongst them. That maybe you're not, maybe you're burning that, and you received me, and baked the milk." And I was like, "God, I don't remember, the sightings." Then I was also trying to figure this, I'm like, "Okay." So that was my initiation to these beings. And how, like I said, it continued towards, they would come to me, and she was always curious of me. Whenever I was there, she would show up. Whenever I, you know, give them a year, and I would ask my grandmother or her partner about it. It was always the same, the rolling eyes, and, "Oh, you're crazy, you know, what you're talking about." "Oh, I've seen it like that." Blah, blah, blah. Very... So that is, like I said, that was my initiation to it. For years, you know, I was the Bob Gimlin film, you know, which obviously, thank us and nobody, and thanks to cops over here, who did, were connected with Mr. Gimlin, and it just, it was a thrill of life. And still a joy, and then I made friends with a man that has this fame, shall we say. But anyhow, whatever I had. Anyhow, over the years, I had multiple encounters that I've been through all day, around the different things. Dogland, Camper, Madison, Michigan, off the, just all the ticking down, which, I'll get into it in writing in these days. I don't want to go into that now. Anyway, the, to me, my most memorable, and kind of what's got me to be friends with Tom and Barb, and really to expand upon, and connectivity and learning with these beings and what actually they are, and what they have to teach us, what they're trying to tell us. Happened to me in two thousand and three. I was in the oilfield design engineering, where one of my specialties was packaging people, which kind of connects with a lot of Tom's research as far as correlating the length of our foot to how height, how tall we are, or the overall square inch of the foot. It correlates to, how we calculate how heavy the being is. All these anatomical measurements and military, I had to deal with when I would create and design seats and passive restraints and insert panels and steering columns and all of that stuff. So anyhow, after nine eleven, when things tanked and the economy really started, the crash of seven, eight, basically started in Michigan after nine eleven, to where the last couple of years of designers and engineers and craftsmen's all went from fifty, sixty, seventy dollars an hour working sixteen, seventy dollars a week to working thirty-eight dollars a week and making twenty-dollar a hour, literally, I had to live in six months. So my twenty-five years in the business went, boom, gone. You know, like, okay, what are we gonna do? Well, I'd taken a boat, I'd contracted Bowman in ninety-seven, and just fell in love with that out here. Just absolutely fell in love with it. Was out on St. Helens, on the north of the tube, and met a couple of my, my second wife and I. Met a couple, it was all day, what they called, well, now called Eco Park Resort. And it's halfway between Castle Rock and the Johnson Observatory. So we were out there, and we decided, after, again, after nine eleven, we thought, okay, how are we going to survive? Because I couldn't get a job, stupid, effective floor right now, if I'm losing everything. Maybe whatever else, water, also important, also losing second one. And I was like, right, we'll need to sell the thing, move out, buy something, trying to start over. So in that plan, we decided we're gonna buy this property, build a log cabin lodge, and start our own breakfast out in the wilderness, this, you know, in the summertime, everybody else's gap, right? So again, with this group that we met, I was out looking at property. And the gentleman owned it. He was like, "You know, you should take a word for your survey, and go wander down to the Muntzol. Because it's beautiful, it's just nature and that." Okay. So I put all my stuff away, and I said, "All right." And I turned down this little trail, and the holders had started growing back. And it was built almost like this perfect dark tunnel. As you come down off of this property towards the Muntzol. And I was just almost feeling like I'm walking into somewhere that I shouldn't be. And I couldn't listen to myself, okay? I didn't listen to that feeling. So I see at the end of the tunnel, I see the light, which is what I know as the Muntzol. And I'm concentrating, I keep walking, keep walking. And I get down, and all of a sudden, I notice there's another light coming off on my left. What's another trail? So I turned to the light, and it's like, "Oh, what's that?" It's a military. And then I noticed it was part of what looks like broken pavement, and I see the double yellow line. I said, "Oh, this is the original, it's pretty..." But I would, it was all broken up and nature took it back, I was looking. And I'm looking at all this broken pavement, I said, "Oh, it's kind of cool." And as I did, I started hearing this... Oh, right, right, and I just looked again, and this little shrub is moving. And for some reason, I know it's there, for some reason, I'm turning this way. And I'm trying to turn around, and I see the shrubs to my right, all of a sudden, and in my head, I hear, "Look over here." And as I look to my right, I get a shadow of just like a beam between two older trucks. And they're about six, eight inches in length, okay? And this one, they're all very high. Now, I still to this day, I'd like to know what it was. But it had a grab hold of each tree trunk, one on each side. As I could see a hand and an arm around the other, right? You know, guess what it was doing? "Look at me, look at me, look at me." And in my head, all I keep hearing is, "You don't belong here, move it, move it." And that forces my mind, again, in a process of analysis, it's like, okay, I need to get out. But at the same time, I'm looking, I want to see it. Whatever this is being, I want to see it, right? So I'm staring at the peak of these two trees, and I'm moving, and I start going to the side of those steps, bro. Pushing to the right. Well, I go up there, more steps, and the trees stop kicking, they just stop. And I'm like, okay, where is it? Did it disappear? The minute I stopped, and I keep my eye on it, to see if I could see that beam again, about fifteen feet over, I see one footprint. And it rolled through. I'm stuck there, keep moving. This isn't here, it's talking to me, just like the female when I was a kid, just go ahead. I'm here, and I'm here, you don't belong there, keep moving, right? I did that the way I liked, until I got to the gate of the forest door, okay? And every single time I got stopped, I'm like, "Here, keep moving." And it's just, it's up here, keep moving, you don't belong there, keep moving. Okay, I got out of that, that gate, and of course, I get the key, it's the old golden key. I go right out, clear as the sunshine, and I slide my gate, and I run it out, and slide the gate, and I stop again, and I'm looking around to another tree. Is it here? And just like that, call, it's like, "Yeah, call too." I'm like, "Oh, okay. What the hell was that? Why you don't belong up there? What the hell was that?" And it's, it, yeah, the first encounter never came into my mind, but obviously... So it was like, oh my God, I gotta get back to the house. So I go, "Why didn't I get to the lodge?" And I go to the owner, I was like, "Dude, what the bleep?" He was, "Oh, glad to see you get back." Just like that. I'm like, "You son of a..." "What are you doing there?" I said, "You told me that a cougar does elk, you know..." Because he said it was a cougar, but it was like a older one that just keeps track of the herd, and you'll be fine, don't worry about it. I said, "What the hell was that?" And again, you're like, "Who's..." And I'm not getting mad, because he wouldn't tell me what was going on, he wouldn't, you know... He wants me to get, take this business, well, you know, a record, there's like three million dollars to build this massive log cabin lodge. Working for, and that's why I told him, it's on my own property, and I don't want to buy that, right? Like, "What the hell is that?" And I'm not fired, and I'm like, "Look, you got all these prints, and so you got elk bones with teeth marks in them, you know, and your shawls, you're in a restaurant, and you tell me that right here, what is being, what's going on?" And it's like, "Dude, who are you gonna tell me? I own the business, my wife owns the county tourism board, I'm running the county commissioner this year. What are you gonna tell me? You're in the woods." Come on. So thankfully, that won't be a cure, because that would have lost my terrible life. So anyhow, fast forward to two thousand and twenty. The children, the two boys, it was my second wife on my head, and I had two years. And unfortunately, her and I had split up. And that summer, I decided to take boys out to the site. "Come on, guys, I want to go show you." They all think Dad's crazy. I'm like, "Yeah, I think that, I can't think of the mission, I can't show my ass, man." So, so we go out, and of course, it's right smack in the middle of COVID shutdown. So the old ones in there is the owner, his wife was in town in Kelso, because his mother, his poor mother was in a facility like this. And she was going in and staying the weekend, and taking care of two things. So it was him, me, and my two girls, time for thirteen fifty. And we're in tents, I'd be in a good cabin, we're in tents. And I know what's there, and I'm in a tent. Okay, okay. Oh, yeah, okay, it better be before, it'd be curious, but yeah. Yeah. So, you know, "Come on, guys, let's sit down on the, let's sit down on the Muntzol, and I'll show you the spot, by the way." So we get down there, around the corner. First thing I gotta do is go through the gate. It's not black anymore, it's not oppressive and overbearing, I don't feel like I don't belong. What's changed? I don't know. They clicked up the whole way. Click up, here it is going. What happened when you clicked up? There's this big giant square, right? Not here, it's like a clicker. It's like, why are they saving this, but not that? And to this day, I don't know, but anyhow, the spike is clicked. And then I noticed where the landscape is, and, you know, it's like this bowl here, and it made sense. This was a little camping spot where they could hide that book, they were hidden from everything around. So I was just looking, pointing out, and the kids, it's all, yeah, I'm gonna hear, it's like, "You're shaking." And I do the whole spiel with the kids, and they're just like, you know, "Chase, chase, we're gonna camp." So we get down, it's like, "Got game, I'm here, bro, let's go." We're down at Muntzol, I'm standing there, watching, looking at all the trees that are underwater, because the kids are all, "Oh, that's cool." And my other son, the other one, is kneeling in the water, my youngest one, is standing right next to me. And he's got his hand around my hand, he's like, "He dead, man." And as he's asking me, the site, or I, it's not original, it's not obviously behind me, but it's about fifty, sixty feet high. And as he's asking me, the site, or my, my original, is now, obviously behind me, but it's up about fifty, sixty feet higher, because the trail comes down there. And from that spot, I hear, and I can't do this justice, because it's an Indian speaker, the run or hit that you hear online, that but this is, or I got it, is if I can just do the syllables, and the volume, forgive me if I shop it, but it was I was like, "Oh," and I jumped, something jumped, and everybody around, and it's like, "There, we go, there we go." But, yes, we go out. So, I said, "You guys get up the road, I'm gonna walk backwards, so that if Indians come, I'm gonna, you know, yell over there." Wow, so I'm doing that, and I'm like, "All right, guys, I'm coming around, get me to it," you know, turn around, boom, a hundred feet up the trail. And then I go in, and I take, hop back, and everything, though. And then I get up there, and my little son goes, "Yeah, you just saw Tommy." I said, "What? Why don't I tell you?" He said, "He hit the same man, uh, crying from Star Wars." I said, "What?" And he picks up a stick, and he goes, "Boo." And I was like, "Oh, man." I said, "You have audio, you can deal with it." So first, we're like, "You guys go back to your tents, I'm gonna go to the lodge, and I'm gonna get a cabin for ten minutes." So I go there, and I go to the over, and I'm like, "Mark, or someone." "Dude, who told you she's in Tasso?" "No, well, I just had some woman yell, in some funky language." And he was, "Oh, my God." "You're in the woods." "Oh my God." I still didn't start that shit with you, we're getting ready. But seriously, I said, "Don't you start that with me." I said, "Come on, it's been almost twenty years, what in the hell is going on out here?" And he was, "You're in the woods." "Oh, my God, you're in the woods, in the woods, pal." I said, "I know, I know, man, I just wanted to say." He was like, "Dude." "Dude, that's good." So I went out, and I began to, I'm like, "Oh, yeah." "I'm gonna go, you don't want to go, dude." Go there. Yeah. And, he doesn't have that tone. "You want me to go on, or you want me to become your partner?" "Yeah, yeah." "Okay, man." But anyhow, uh, it has been my privilege to take my experiences, um, to heart. And when I did a documentary on Hulu, um, in two thousand and eighteen, which is kind of Sasquatch, and it was a it was a movie industry in California, with that, so Pot Farm, or Swears, committed by Sasquatch. And in our, in dealings with the documentary, um, the studio told me that the audience reaction to my partner's participation was so positive and comical, that they wanted us to start doing festivals, and to start doing presentations, and get in with people, because we might do our own show. So, and then because of that, the studio sent me a list of all the festivals in Pacific Northwest, and my first one I went to was in Beverly Falls, where I ran into this young man, told him of my encounter, and the first thing out of his mouth was, "Don't you know what that was?" And I, I would have mentioned it if I did this, maybe a year ago, and he said, "You were in to the teenage portal." I'm like, "What?" He said, "Yeah, Mom and Dad ran into it, Junior, he said, watched it, the balloons, you were in the nursery." And I clicked. Oh my God, you're right. I would wear a shirt for that band, Mom and Dad were grown, Bobby was taking care of Sissy, or whatever, and I had the weed before that showed up, and that's exactly what happened. It was like a lightbulb, right? And it's been that way ever since. Every time anything comes up, I say something to Tom, and he's like, "Don't you know?" "No, I don't know, Tom, why don't I ask you?" And Tom was out, you know, and I think about it, I say, "Okay, okay." And because of that, I had been in contact with Tom's teacher, um, we had encountered, um, it was the second time, we went to Beverly Falls, Tom was there, and, um, it was a young lady that was with us, who actually had a, um, encounter, she was a child, and she felt she was an abductee. And multiple times, she'd been, she was an abductee, um, an alien species. And she was connecting with the Sasquatch beings, because in one of her encounters, she felt she saw one of them, um, one of the crabs that she had, in her mind, had been on. And while she was, Tom was sitting at the end of the table on his scooters, he always does, and so Tom had been here, I was here, and she was sitting in the chair next to me, and she was talking to Tom, asking him questions. And as she started speaking, Tom's teacher kicked in, and started speaking through him to her. And as that happens, the energy radiates out in this water. And I'm sitting there, and I'm looking at her as she's talking to Tom, so I have no idea who's talking to Tom, I don't see Tom, I'm looking at Jen. And all I feel is this wave of cool electrical energy, just washed across me, and it goes more than that, to Jen. And I see that the look on Jen's face, just goes from talking here to, like, "Oh my God." And she, she wants Tom, and I love Tom. And I've got drawings, the drawing of Tom, is like, just a big white drawing, it's all, of the, of academia. I'm seeing the face coming out of Tom's face, his eyes being big and flat circles and so on. And, the realization of Jen's face, it wasn't happening, my, my realization is, "Oh my God," and it just built in awe of the presence, so to speak. So, and that feeling, and that expansion of knowledge, um, for me, continues almost weekly. As we do these festivals, and we talk to people, um, we hear our encounters, we do bars, camping trips, and we get out with them. And, um, I, I've learned over the time that, um, they felt that I was open to being taught, and I just needed to get rid of the fear, and learn with respect, and learn how to just talk to them, and they will teach me, and that's what I've been doing. Unfortunately, it took me forty-seven years to figure it out. So, I'd love to go on with my others in the clean, but hopefully, as Tom keeps partying under the catapult, I can write it all down and make a book, so. But on that, uh, point, I'm gonna cut it short, because we have the four o'clock time frame, and, um, we need to get the road back to the facility. So I'm gonna like to thank Tom's teacher for giving us the time, and for Thomas, for everybody else, Pops, love you, man. I'm handing it back to you. Thanks to those, thank you.